Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'm gonna open the planning commission meeting. Call it to order. The first thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is anybody wanna add anything or change anything? If not, um...
Madam Chair?
Yes?
You need to do the roll call first, please, to see who's in attendance.
Okay. Laura, I'm here. Peter?
Here.
Um, Gary Pettis?
Yeah, here.
Steve Livermore?
Here.
Dustin Forbrook?
I'm here.
Damian Young?
Here.
And John Sturgis?
Here.
Okay, so the full planning commission is here. Did you get it all, Chris?
Yes ma'am, thank you.
Okay.
Can I just ask one other question? Is Gary Vars and Mike Clarkwood also in attendance?
Uh, Gary is here.
Mike is here.
Okay.
But I do not...
And then, um, I'm sorry, what?
What's that? No, go ahead, go ahead.
And then, um, the council lead is on Anne McGregor is present also?
Yes, I'm here. This is Anne.
Okay, and then city planner Nick Wolfson?
I'm here.
And then myself, the city clerk Chris Lindquist. Is there anybody else in staff?
We also got Joe Saff with Kennedy and Graven here as well.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that next who?
Joe Saff, Kennedy and Graven.
Oh, Joe's, okay. Thank you.
Is that good?
Hope I'm saying that right. I guess I don't know.
It's okay.
I got, I got everybody.
It's sappy, but nobody, nobody ever gets right.
Sappy, gotcha.
It's not a problem.
My apologies.
I got everybody now, thank you very much.
Okay, back to the agenda. Um, do I have a motion to approve the agendas submitted?
I saw move.
And that was Gary Pettis. Do I have a, do I have a second?
Second, this is Peter Vickery.
Peter is, Peter Vickery is seconding it. Okay, I'm gonna go down the roll call. I say aye. Peter?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
Damian?
Aye.
And John?
Aye.
Okay, so the minutes are approved, or the agenda is approved seven to zero. The next item is the approval of the minutes of the January 25th meeting. Was there any changes or anything that somebody didn't think was represented correctly? No, no questions, no changes. So then, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from last month?
Steve, I make a motion to approve the minutes from last month.
Okay, Steve makes the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second this.
I'll second.
Okay, who second? Damian?
That's fine, yeah, I second.
Damian seconded, okay. We're gonna go down the list. I say aye. Peter?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
Damian?
Aye.
And John?
Aye.
Okay, the minutes from last month approved, approved seven zero. Um, no public hearings this month. So the next, um, item is a business item and it's the discussion of the ordinance, the solar energy ordinance. So Nick, do you wanna tell us anything about this?
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the staff report is probably fairly self-explanatory. I tried to give us a little bit of where we were, how we got there, where we are, um, with regards to kind of the, the adoption of the ordinance back in 2015, and then the recent site plan that we went through this past fall, um, that resulted in the denial of that site plan along with a moratorium, um, specific to ground-mounted solar within the egg preserve zoning district. Um, so in the background, I kind of outlined what, you know, that, that ordinance 431, what it provided to city code, and then for discussion, I outlined kind of what the, the recent ordinance or proposed ordinance 463 would bring, um, to city code. So like I said before, the main purpose of this, uh, meeting tonight is I guess just to have a check-in discussion with the planning commission, see if we're all on the same page based on what happened at the, you know, kind of planning commission when we were applying the ordinance that we adopted five, six years ago, and see if we're just headed in the right direction, um, before we open this up to the formal, you know, public hearing process where we'd send notice to the newspaper and post to the city's website. Um, so included in there is the draft of ordinance 463. Um, I did ask that our attorney's office be present here, and we have Joe Saff with Kennedy and Graven. Should any planning commissioners have questions as it, um, you know, pertains to maybe some of the language in the ordinance or, you know, how it may or may not be applied as, as written. Um, so I don't know if Joe has anything to add at this time, or if we just kind of open it up and discuss and see, see what the thoughts are.
Madam Chair, I don't have anything to add at this point, uh, but I'm happy to answer any, just any questions regarding uh, the language changes that were proposed, uh, in the ordinance, as, as long as they're helpful.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for being here. Um, okay, well, I guess looking at this ordinance, this is the way I thought kind of the ordinance had been written, you know, that there was conditional use permits for... I didn't know we had permitted that for our, what is it, the agricultural preserve. So I'm glad to see that's back to a CUP before anybody puts a large one. This also means, right Nick, that they have to live on the property that they're putting the solar panels on, correct?
Yes, I believe we've changed it now that they, in all instances, are an accessory use. I, I think we've eliminated the principal use and, you know, sole use of the property for solar. Um, that was kind of one of the main discussion points, obviously, when we were applying the ordinance of, you know, was that the intent and that, is that what we thought? Um, and clearly, there was some, some disagree, you know, misunderstandings, disagreements, whatever you wanna call it. So that's what the, the change in the language would, would allow.
Okay, um, I did have a question on the verbiage. It would be, I don't know, it's the last page of the ordinance or where you describe the, where the ordinance has changed under conditional uses. It says it must be a principal use to which the system is, is accessory. And that means that it, the principal use is a house and then the solar system is an accessory? Is that what that sentence means? It's L subdivision for conditional uses in a DL.
Yes, yep, you know, in most cases, in most of the properties and zoning districts in Minatrista, uh, a house is the principal use, yes.
Okay, that's what I want, or, or if it was a school, the school could be the principal use.
Correct.
And they could put on, or a church, and they could put in ground solar. Okay.
Correct, yes.
But this is just, doesn't this just apply to the agricultural preserve district? That section?
In, in the ordinance, yes, but the existing language from previous ordinance 431 already has that language in every other zoning district.
Okay.
It was only the egg preserve where we had it switched. So now we're basically mimicking the rest of the zoning districts, at least as far as residential and, um, agricultural are concerned. I did make the note in there about our commercial and our industrial zoning with the proposed changes. The, basically, any solar in that district would require a conditional use permit. Roof-mounted or ground-mounted, with the way it's written. So I guess that's something we can certainly discuss if, if the commission doesn't feel that that's appropriate. But I mean, I, I think there could be enough, you know, difference in, in the architectural and the design of buildings in the, say, commercial or industrial versus a residential where maybe it does warrant, you know, further consideration in, in any scenario. Because if you get like a flat roof building in commercial or industrial, it might look more ground-mounted because they might mount it on brackets and angle it to, you know, point at the sun essentially.
Yeah, and it, it's not like we wouldn't allow that use, they would just have to get a conditional use permit to put it on the building.
Right, I mean, it's a conditional use essentially as a permitted use, it's just one that you attach conditions to.
Okay, okay. Um... Did you explain, I just had one other question. Could you explain? I'm confused by a double frontage lot. That means you're on a corner lot, right?
In most cases, yes. Um, I don't know that we have many where you'd have an alleyway or a, a road behind you. Um, that'd be another scenario where if you, you know, you had, you know, two streets going on two sides of your property and it's, and they're not at an intersection. But I don't know if we have many of that scenario anyways, but I mean, that'd be another case of a double frontage if you had an alleyway or another road in your backyard versus, you know, uh, another house or another property.
Because it sounds like you could let it be in your quote "front yard." Is that the intent, I guess, or is the front yard like the side yard then?
Well, right, it would be like a, a, kind of like a street-side yard. Um, I mean, that's something, I mean, if the commission doesn't think that that's appropriate, I mean, that's something we could look into changing. Um, but obviously, then, you know, you could be cer- severely limited on a corner lot, but maybe that's most appropriate.
No, that's what I was thinking it was for, was for like a corner lot. But the verbiage was confusing, and maybe it's for you guys in the, the city and you read this all the time, it may be more obvious, but that's what I had a question about. Is that just means you're on a corner lot and you're allowed to have it in basically your backyard, but your, your side of your house or your side is, is open to seeing the solar is basically what it is. Is that what it's trying to say?
I mean, yeah, I mean, obviously, in a corner lot, you allowing it in one of the two corners is going to make it prominent on that side, I would guess, but I believe the ordinance still requires screening. So I mean, even on a corner lot, you would still have to put up some sort of screening, you know, whether it be, you know, you know, bushes or trees or fence or something.
Okay.
So you'd still have to do that as well, but I mean, I think it was trying not to limit those lots too much, but yet
Right, yes.
Find the, find the most reasonable compromise, which is to say the, the larger of the two yards is where it would be allowed.
Okay.
Uh, this is Gary Vars. Can I add to that?
Sure.
The sentence before that, which says they shall be limited to the side or the rear yard, and then you go on double-frontage lot, it should be in the front yard, to me, that's very confusing.
That's kind of the way I was.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you. That's, I just didn't wanna get away with this at this point. That's gotta be reworded. That's just as confusing as hell, and somebody's gonna come to us at some point in time and wanna challenge whatever that means, and so I think it could be...
Or they'll wanna put it in their front yard, which the neighbors won't like.
Yeah, I mean, why would you want in the front yard anyway? That's the part that bothers me.
You never know.
Nicholas, this is John. I guess when I, as, when I read that, first of all, let me back up. Is the whole point, the aesthetic part of it, we, we don't want it sticking out where everybody sees it, right? And so that's why the first sentence is into the side or the backyard. And then, we wanna limit it to 2,000 square feet, so, 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 you know, it's not sprawling. And then I guess when I read, and I don't disagree, um, that maybe, maybe it could be worded a little bit better, but I guess when I'm looking at a double-frontage lot, to me, that's telling me it's almost like it's two front yards. And we just need to put it in the bigger of those because it's not gonna look as, as, um, the aesthetic part of it's not gonna look as bad. It, that's how I read it.
Why couldn't you just put it in the rear yard in the double-fronted lot? I'm confused why that's not an option.
It is an option. I guess maybe it is worded, you know, a little poorly. That's, it's the existing language, so I mean, it's
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it, I see where everyone's coming from, but yeah, I mean, it, you know, in, um, a normal situation, you'd have two side yards and a rear yard as your options for it. On a corner lot, you lose one of the side yards because they become two front yards. So the idea behind that language is to say, well, if you've got two front yards, we're not gonna severely limit you, we'll just focus on the larger of the two as your third option. So the rear and the side are still an option, it's just your, your third option becomes the larger of your front yards.
If that's the intent, then it should be written to say that. This tells, when I read this, I think it was saying the same thing. I'm thinking you gotta put it in the front yard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you could, could just clean that up, I guess.
Maybe just say that. Nick, say, say, in lieu of a side, in lieu of one of the side lots, you can use the larger of your two front lots.
Yeah, the word, actually, the word "front" is the problem, I think.
Right.
But don't we also wanna state, um, Steve, kind of to your point, in lieu of an obvious side or rear yard, if we want it to be in a much less evasive position, since some of those words, so that, you know, once again, it's not sitting right next to somebody's driveway or, or, you know, or right next to another...
On the side of their front door.
Yeah, yeah.
So, is the idea that everyone's discussing is on a double-frontaged corner lot, the applicant would need to explore the rear and the side first and then only move to the, uh, the side yard or the front, the front side yard in extreme cases? Or is it something as simple as turning must into may? You know, where they may be able to locate in there, not that they have to, because I can see how must insinuates that this is what we want you to do, so if it's...
I don't hate about the back, I don't hate about the back and the other side lot, right? It's almost like I have to put it in my front yard, so I think, go ahead, John.
Nicholas, I, I also think I think we can be a little grayer for that part of the, the language because, but we stayed in there, that's part of the condition. When it comes to council, um, part of the condition is we all agree where they can put it. You know, I, I don't necessarily think you have to make a statement that it has to go right there. If it's, if it's as simple as they have a side yard in the backyard, that's simple, that's where it goes, all right? Um, but I think, I think my suggestion is we, we leave it somewhat open-ended to say that will be part of the conditional use approval.
But this, this could be in a, in a residential neighborhood, right, Nick? And then you wouldn't need a conditional use permit because it's a permitted usage?
No, and it, like I said before, the ordinance is set up that in any case for ground-mounted solar, it's gonna require a conditional use.
It's ground, that's right, it's ground-mounted.
So in any case where it's ground-mounted.
Yes, that would work well then, because everything then is a conditional use permit on the ground-mounted.
Correct.
You're saying put may versus must, right?
That was my, that was my proposal, I guess, is, is may doesn't, is not, you know, you know, must and may are clearly different. Must makes it seem like you have to, may seems like you can't.
But I still like the idea of in lieu of the side yard, you may use the larger of your two front yards. Therefore, you're not, when I, like I said, when I read it, if you put may in there, it still isn't tying in the previous statement about using the back lot and the other side lot, to me.
Right, I agree.
Okay, that's fine.
I, I also wonder, does this, does this have any, any cause or cause any problems with agricultural buildings? Or with when we talk down here about, uh, daycare centers and other places that could have possible multiple yards and multiple driveways?
I mean, it, it still goes back to the point that John brought up. I mean, in every case, it's a conditional use. And in every case, planning commission and council would get to look at it, so, you know, I mean, it's it's a use that's permitted so long as you meet conditions. A condition could be you've gotta move it to your side or your rear yard or whatever is determined appropriate for the specific property, you know, in question.
All right.
I guess, is, is that seem, is everyone on the same page with that, that concept?
Mm-hmm. I'm, I'm good. I like that concept. I like where Steve was going with it.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, I said my things. Did anybody else have items that they wanted to?
This is Peter. I'd like to talk about, you know, this is totally precluding, um, having any solar gardens or any kind of commercial, um, solar, uh, facilities. And of course, this all came up because somebody proposed that, and it did come down, I think, to a matter of aesthetics. But, uh, you know, it seems to me that it's a good idea to encourage solar and, you know, we do allow other uses, um, in agricultural areas. And, um, so I guess I'd just like to throw it out there that it, it seems like, you know, we should be open to some of these, uh, larger installations. So I, I guess I'd like to just hear what other people have to say about that.
Well, this is Steve. I agree with you. I agree with you. I was, I was concerned that we're really shutting the door on this, but I think one of the issues we may have is the fact that we just, I, given the fact that this guy did his research and found one piece of land in all of Minatrista, you gotta wonder if, if, if we're, we're self-selecting ourselves out anyways, right? So, uh, I, I don't know where you would put it, right, because of some of the restrictions that already apply. But I agree with you. I'm a little concerned about how restrictive it is.
Peter, I thought the same thing. Um, when, when I read it, it, it's, once again, I go back to what I mentioned to Nicholas. This is a conditional use, and by putting, for example, 2,000 square feet or other restrictions ahead of the conditions, we're leaving it open for us and for the council, the fact that it's conditional. And, and to your point and Steve's point, okay, would somebody pass it and say, oh, I'm gonna go to another area and do this, maybe from a commercial perspective or whatever? So, yeah, I, I, it's a little concerning that we're, that we're limiting ourselves if we put certain limits in there, because once it's conditional, it's conditional. And, and, and now, the flip side of it, Peter, is that it does help us. Meaning the fact of, of if we have it there, we can say, well, wait a minute, we, this just shouldn't have been brought to the table anyway because it wouldn't fit into that part of it. So I think you have to look at both angles.
Say that again, John. Could you explain that a little clearer for me?
I'm sorry, my point is, is that, the, I have two points. One is that it's conditional, and so let's be careful on what conditions we put in it already, because it is all going to be conditional, right? And one of the, one of the conditions is it can't be more than 2,000 square feet, all right? Well, that's one, and that's just an example. The flip side of it is, is that by having, this, this is, this is the counter argument, is by having certain limitations in there, then we'll, we would potentially have less people coming to the table asking for certain things that we may not want for them to bring to the table.
Can I, I just wanna explain, I probably should have done this in, in the beginning when I was kind of giving a little bit of a background, but I do wanna just explain a little bit as to why the number was chosen, um, in the manner it was. Um, we took a look at, there's three systems in Minatrista presently. Two that the planning commission reviewed through the conditional use permit process, and one that was allowed because of its zoning. It was in the egg preserve, it was an accessory use, and that was permitted. So we took a look at the three systems out there, and I think the largest one was, give or take, like fifteen, um, 1,500 square feet of solar, um, panels. So we rounded up to 2,000, thought that was a fair number to start in terms of size. Um, because some of the feedback we were getting was, you know, the argument of the farm versus the garden. And I know some people were against the concept of a solar farm, but they were okay with the idea of a garden. And that's kind of the basis in why that language is in there. Um, like I said, that's why we're also here tonight discussing, to figure out if that's correct and that's what we want, or if there is a different number, or if we don't want the number, and so on. So I just, I, I probably should have said that on the, at the front end, but I just wanted to explain it briefly as to where that number came from, its justification for us using it, and, you know, then I guess where you guys wanna go with it.
I, I have a comment, Nick. I, I don't, I don't foresee the city of Minatrista going to anything that's a very large industrial without some sort of a major sewer system. So thinking that a business is going to wanna come in and have a gigantic solar system, I think is a, is a stretch, at least for the next foreseeable future. And I think the, the other thing is, is we don't have any large farms here. Now, do, do we have any farm that's over maybe 120 acres? So the necessity for a large solar system in the city of Minatrista seems pretty nonexistent to me. So, so I, I like the 2,000 square feet.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess I'm just gonna show my ignorance. I don't know what 2,000 square feet of solar panels produces or what that will support, right? So I don't know if that's large enough for somebody who has a larger farm operation, if that's large enough for them to support the electrical needs that they have. That's, that's where I'm coming from. So if, if we have some information about that and say 2,000, to your point, Nick, there's a couple, three of them out there, but I, I don't know what their use cases are, what they produce, and if that's significant or enough for someone else that might come along. So that's my, my hesitancy, if you will.
Yeah, but you also remember, they could do roof-mounted too. So I mean, if they've got barns and stuff, I mean, they, they could do some sort of a combination as well, and I mean, you know, part of this can also be trial and error. I mean, we, we have three examples to go off of, of people that have a residence and have an accessory ground-mounted solar, uh, energy system. So we've got, you know, at least a little bit to go off of that. These residents have determined that's sufficient for what they're doing. Now, I think one of the three probably has some sort of agricultural production, whether it be hay or vegetables or other crop, I, I don't know. The other two, I believe, are pretty much strictly residential. So I mean, obviously, that's able to support a residence, you know, a single-family house. Now, to your point, Steve, I mean, if they've got outbuildings that, you know, have got power and, you know, used to work or charge machinery or whatever it is, we don't know, but I mean, they will have the option of roof-mounted. Um, so I mean, there, there's that as well. I mean, it doesn't necessarily meant to be the, you know, fallback, but I mean, maybe in the case we, we find out that someone says, hey, I just can't make that work, I need more, and then maybe we, you know, look at it, um, you know, we were back to where we are today. I, I don't know, you know. By, by no means am I an expert in solar. I'm, you know, just using the, um, the past applications we have as the basis.
So if we wanted to change it in the future, say it was 2,000, and somebody came with a good proposal and it made sense, what would be the process to allow that to happen with a conditional use permit? Would we have to do, uh, you couldn't do a variance, right? That's not a variance.
Hello, Joe, can you maybe help me out here? I guess I don't know, I mean, if, if that language is written to basically say you can't permit anything above 2,000, or is it a, if someone wants more than 2,000, is it a variance? Is it a condition of a conditional use permit, you know? a condition of a conditional use permit, you know, or is it an ordinance amendment?
Yeah, so it would be, you know, if you choose this number at 2,000, someone comes in with a larger proposal that it's you're right, it's not a variance, because a variance, you know, requires the determination that there's some unique aspect of the property that requires the variance. And, you know, you could amend the ordinance if someone came with a good proposal. And they're also, I think, I don't I'm not as familiar with these, but you could potentially have a process where uh, it's not an exception, like an interim use kind of deal, but but that, my understanding is that would be a sort of a significant exception to this this rule. And, you know, could be addressed at that point, could be addressed at this point. And it's sort of whatever the commission and council want to do.
Okay, thank you. So basically, though, with this 2,000 square feet, we're saying no commercial um, not commercial solar farms. I mean, that's all it is. It's
It's it's no ground mounted. Doesn't mean that they, if they had a 100,000 square foot building, that we may not be able to allow them to panel the whole building.
Right, but the fellow with the proposal, I mean, basically, you'd have to build a house and the most you could have is 2,000 square feet of solar panels.
On the ground.
On the ground. Yes, precisely. Yep. Okay. Any other discussion comments?
Nicholas, I'm sorry. You you addressed this a little bit, but um what what is the reason for the 2,000? Is it? Is it just a basic that time seems like? I mean, one of the realities is with technology, the amount of energy and and the amount that that a that a solar system is going to do now is probably a fraction of what it'll probably be able to do in five or 10 years. Just like every, just like all other technology that's getting smaller and smaller. But i- is there a reason for the 2,000 or it's just always been there? Because I think someone mentioned there was one that was 1,500. So we, did we just come up with a number that was kind of a general idea?
Yes, the the 2,000 on its face is is arbitrary, but it's based off of the three existing examples we have. The largest being the 1,500 square foot um accessory, um, you know, ground mounted solar we have, which is the largest of the three we have. So like I said, we rounded up to a nice round 2,000. So I mean, it's solely based on the existing systems we had. We didn't want to create a situation where our limit was lower than what we already have to create a nonconforming situation. That's why we went up rather than down. But I mean, it is more or less arbitrary. I mean, the commission could change that number. I mean, if they thought 3,000 made sense, whatever the number is. I mean, it's the 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 logic for why 2,000 was chosen was solely based on the existing systems we have. And it's at least seemed like a fair starting point in terms of a garden, you know, because I mean, that was one of the discussion points was distinguishing between a garden and a farm. A garden seemed to be okay, farm, not so much. So putting a size limitation, I mean, that's, you know, the reason there is a size limitation. And the reason the number was chosen is based on the existing systems we have.
Cool. Do do we, do we potentially want to have other designations? Meaning, do we want a state residential 2,000 farm 4,000? And and to your point of arbitrary, I just made those numbers up, the 4,000. But I I I don't have any idea about solar, except that, just like everything else in technology, that the amount of space you're going to need for technology in the future is going to be a heck of a lot less.
And that and that's true. We have solar on our, we, I live in a out in the country. We have a farm in our barn. Um, we have south facing roof that we put solar panels on. If I were to do it over again, I'd put more than what we did, but what we have doesn't cover our farm. I know our neighbor up the road on 92, he put on, oh, I it's got to be 100 feet by 20 feet. So he's probably got that on his roof. I don't know if that even covers all of his uh heating, but he heats his buildings, etc. So but since we put them in, they've become much more efficient. You're right. And it's only been like five years and you would have much, much better um uh, power coming off the same same group.
One comment I wanted to make was, I think there's the opposite. If you had a property that 2,000 was too much or really kind of exceeded the expectation um, that the um, this body and the council would want for that property. Um, you may have um, a property owner say, well, no, I I'm entitled 2,000 and they're pushing it to that limit. I think um, I kind of like where John and Steve were going with it, and we should just leave a number out of it. Um, that way, we we're, we uh, you know, we have discretionary um you know, historical numbers to kind of work with. Uh, and we're not boxing ourselves in. Um, that's my thought.
On the other hand, giving people a number at least gives them an idea of what they can do and what they may not be able to do. And so there's that side of it also.
But it does count in towards their hardcover, right? So they got a little bit.
True, there's only so much you can put with your hardcover.
Is it 100, is it 100% credit on the hardcover? Or is it uh, like 50%? I believe the way we we at least had it written before, and I I see here. So yeah, I mean, now it's it's 100% calculated and you draw the smallest box around system. So it would, it's trying to incentivize grouping, trying to force them to have it all compatible. But yeah, it'd be that box is is what would count 100%. It might not be full impervious in that box, you know. Um, but at least the way it's written, it would be that that box is what counts.
And then remind me, Nick, what's the limit on a on a lot? For impervious coverage?
It's gonna all depend on the zoning. It does vary based on zoning district. It it would vary if you're in the shoreline overlay district. Um, traditionally, uh, 35% is is standard in the residential, 25% in the um rural, the ag land. It's pretty standard. Uh, shoreline overlay is 25%. But I mean, there's also planned unit developments like Woodland Cove is is set up where each lot gets their own number, you know, so it varies based on each lot, not just on the zoning. So um but those numbers I gave you were kind of the general numbers of it. So I mean, you think about it in, you know, a, you know, an egg zone piece of property, 25% lot coverage on a 10 acre lot is, you know, or is it two and a half acres? So I mean, that's thinking 120 some thousand square feet that they'd be allowed. So I mean, are we okay with that? Because I mean, you you're forcing them to have a house, but then do we care if they have you know, 80, 100,000 square feet in panels? I mean, that's far different than 2,000. So I mean,
But we still get an option to say no, right? It's a conditional use.
Well, I mean, conditional use is a permitted use that so that our conditions are met. I mean, you'd have to think of what conditions are you going to attach to someone that wants to do 80,000 square feet of panels? That's going to mitigate, you know. So I mean, it's I don't know that a conditional use permit has an immediate out just because it's a conditional use. Conditional use is a is a a permitted use that you have control over, where you can attach conditions to it. So I mean, various screenings, locations, things like that, you'd have control of that. But I don't know if you could just flat out say, eh, we don't want 80,000 square feet of panels here. You know, you'd have to have a basis for why you would be saying no. Um, and I guess I don't, if Joe wants to to chime in on that at all. I mean, I don't know that we want to use, it's a conditional use is kind of a an easy out clause, I guess.
Right. And I, everything you you just said, Nick, is right. You know, it makes it easier, especially when you're dealing with like conflicts down the road, to be able to sort of universally apply these conditions across all applicants to to determine where and what should be placed, where it should be placed.
You're on mute, John, if you're trying to talk.
Thank you. Uh, it states that it's the verbiage is in no event shall a ground mounted solar system be, so in no event shall be larger than 2,000. Um, and 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 Joe, give me your thoughts, legal thoughts on this. Um, should it be softer? Should it just say that, take out in no event, say, the a ground mounted solar system shall not be larger than 2,000 square feet unless approved by the city council or unless approved by whatever the language Joe thinks makes the most and you think makes the most sense. That way, we're setting kind of a, we're setting a guideline, but we're not using the language in such as in no event. We're just saying, you know, our suggestion is no more than 2,000 square feet unless approved. And and my point of saying that is, then we don't have to, because we all hate changing variances, right? We all hate changing ordinances, because then it's like, well, wait a minute. Why didn't we make it clear? This way, we don't have to amend the ordinance, because it sounded to, I think what Joe was saying is it's not a variance, we would have to amend it. So so can, should it just be softer?
I think, so again, this is Joe. You could, you could make it softer, but but we really recommend that where possible, you have these these solid guidelines. So the people, when they come in to request a conditional use permit, they know exactly what they have to show and what they have to be able to do. And it gets really sticky and complicated uh if you sort of have the the condition that may, I mean, there are conditions that may not apply, but this is a little bit different. Um, so, you know, we can look into finding some language that would that would do that um, and then come back next time if if that's the way that the commission wants to sort of move forward.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah.
I just want to bring something up. I I just part of this and I I don't know. Someone can correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, as well. Um, it, you know, that the the language says in no event shall a ground mounted solar energy system be larger than 2,000 square feet. Would, as it written, would it preclude someone from having multiple systems at 2,000 square feet each?
It's a good question.
That's a very good question.
I mean, I I guess what I'm saying is, I mean, you know, we'd be limiting the the specific system to 2,000. But I mean, who's to say their hardcover, something else wouldn't allow them to have more of them. And I guess the question is, do we care? I mean, is that a way around it where on the larger lots, maybe they just have groupings of these 2,000 square foot pods? That way, if they need more energy, they can get more energy. But maybe we don't want that. Maybe we want, you know, I don't know. I guess that's just something as as John read that, that just made me think.
Nick, you say exterior perimeter of all above ground integrated parts. So I don't know that, that's how I would read this as a single system, right? Whatever you have, you're going to draw a line around all of it.
If I just, yeah, no, that's a good point as well. I just thought looking at that last sentence, I just thought maybe it'd be worth discussing. But yeah, if the the previous sentence does say, you know, all of the parts. So essentially, every property gets one system regardless of where they locate it, how they locate it. So if they had two systems, the box just gets bigger.
Yeah, like you said, right? This is kind of forcing them to make it as small as possible if they want to get the most energy out of it.
Right.
I mean, I, someone could make the case that they were separate systems completely, but I that that seems to be pushing it for me. Uh, do we maybe bump the number to 3,000 and call it a night?
I was just thinking that as I talked about the size of the system that my neighbor has.
Yeah.
And that, I know ours doesn't cover our farm. No, it doesn't cover the whole roof.
Right. But I mean, that's a good point, too. I mean, you're only talking to ground mount option here, right? There's always a roof mount. And I was doing a little research and it appears ground mount is more, could be more efficient and more effective. Uh, but at the same time, I I if you double what you have today, Nick, I think we're gonna, you know, hopefully be good for a few years.
Right. Instead of 20 by 100, it'd be 30 by 100 is what you would be covering now.
Laura, I kind of like where you're going with that, because I I understand we want to restrict farms, but I don't want to place any additional restrictions on um viable property owners that just want to be off the grid, that just want to, you know, um, protect themselves because of um, the cost or um, you know, um, you mean, look, look what's happening in Texas, you know. So I I just I just want to protect. I mean, I'm being honest. I mean, I just want to protect the rights of property owners, so they have their choices.
Has one power grid for the state. You know, um, and we can't please everyone. We have to look at what's going to be the best for for the majority of the people that choose to live and work and farm in our community. If we start saying, well, I want to do those people, well, then, well, I want to do these people. Um, we we can stretch this out having these six.
So Nick, the reason why you chose 2,000 is because there was the largest ground system right now is 1,500 feet? Is that right? Give or take, yeah. It's right around, we use an aerial to to measure it, but yeah, it's right around 1,500. Okay. So yeah, definitely the 3,000 is is fine as well. I mean, like I said, it was just a starting point, I guess, to to facilitate the discussion we're having this evening.
Right. And the the limited factor in the residential is gonna be your uh the 35% ground, ground, um, that's why in in the city, the city city, you can't just put your whole backyard full of it, because that ground cover would, you it would be too much. In fact, many people.
Laura, that's kind of where I was going. Um, if you Nick, if you, you know, you read that sentence above the one I read, which it would started in order to calculate in in instead of it stating in no event shall be 2,000, should it be a percentage?
No, because I think that gets us in a bad place with.
That'll make us farm. I mean, we'll get, we'll get to a farm real quick. That's scary. I mean, I I again, I go back to liking, you know, I'm thinking about the 40 acre properties in the and the um, you know, you're talking about one, 2% of 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 the property, you know, and that's when it gets really restrictive. I mean, this is this, this, we get, you know, really restrictive on the larger property owners. And that that's, that's what's what's um, worrisome for me. And I don't want to, you know, um advocate for that undue um restriction on their rights as property owners.
Yeah. Good.
And so Nick, can you remind us the one system that is 1,500? Is that just a single family residential or is that out on a farm? Or what's the, what's their situation?
It's like a three acre um, single family residence. I, they might have a small garden, um, but by no means are they
Oh, I don't think there's anything like that going on.
Okay. I don't believe, I mean, yeah, primarily residential situation, just a little bit of a larger lot.
Isn't that the one on the north side of the city, north of uh? What is that? What?
Up a North Arm. Up a North Arm Drive.
I I also think we have two realities here. I think one is unless there is something that comes out different, I think that we're going to see more and more solar. Um, but I think the second reality is, especially with a lot of companies, um, for example, Tesla, there are going to be many more roofs that are going to be solar. I mean, Tesla has a solar roof now. So so um you know, and I I don't think a lot of people are going to want to, unless they are farms, they're farms, I don't think they're going to want to uh fill their yards with it. So I'm fine with 2,000 or or if we wanted to go 3,000, I I something of that nature.
Ah, they ask a question.
Hi, this is Anne. Am I allowed to say anything?
Yes, you can say, yep.
Okay, thanks. Um, and and all you're talking, this is, I hope, related to what you're saying. Um, what are any possible adverse effects of having solar? It it does list here um the aesthetics, height setbacks and location, but is there noise involved at all?
No, no noise.
Okay, thanks.
There's a tiny bit at the converter panel, but you wouldn't notice it more than five feet away. But that's a good question because wind has a big that there's a big thing with wind.
Yeah, good point.
Okay, thanks.
Justin, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I mean, I'm fine with the language as it reads right now with the 2,000. I don't think there's going to be a a huge issue with that from what it sounds like. If you look back at the history of Menetriston, biggest one we have in the city right now is 1,500 and that gives, I guess, a good number to go with. If we went to 3,000, I'm not opposed to that either. But I think we should have a definition of some square footage in that in that document or in that language.
Well, this is Peter. Would it be possible to do a little more research and see, okay, what if, you know, what a hobby farm might need to to have it be self sufficient or, you know, what a house might need? I mean, is is there that kind of data out there that, you know, we could be reasonable about then?
Yeah, that's a good point, Peter. Is there a Nick, do you know if any other neighboring cities have adopted something similar?
I'm not sure if they've put in a number. I mean, I definitely know, I mean, neighboring communities have solar ordinances and and, you know, across the metro as well and kind of that same second ring suburb. You know, that's kind of initially where I think we borrowed some of our language from back for ordinance 431, five or six years ago. But I'm guessing the square footage thing, I mean, every city is going to do it differently. I don't know if they limit by square footage or if they limit by percentage or how other cities do it, but you know, I I it was just our thought of, again, going back to the garden versus the farm and quantifying it in a number that made sense and had some reason behind it. You know, like I said, I mean, if this gets up to 3,000 and that I'd be fine by me, that would seem to be a reasonable number. You know, double what we have. But yeah, I mean, as far as what data is out there, I don't know. I guess I've I've never looked into it. You know, our our engineer, WSB and associates had a group that I don't know if they used or partnered with or whatever back in 2015. I don't know if they still have a relationship or not. I mean, maybe we could check with them, but I mean, I don't know to what extent they're going to have the data on how much people use, you know, it might be on how much a system can produce. But I don't know if they're going to have, I mean,
So it's not just, I mean, I'm in technology and I tell you, it's not just a solar panel. There's a whole bunch of other things that go with that. There's the batteries. There's a ton of things that I mean, it's so variable. It depends on what the, you know, property owner is willing to invest. I mean, it really gets dicey. I don't think we want to go down that 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 realm. I think we come up with a solid number and, you know, the future tells us, the future will tell us if we need to adjust it or not. I mean, again, my concern was to we're we're basing that 1,500 off of a three acre, you know, homeowner. I I'm thinking about those 10 acre, 15, 25 acre homeowners, you know, and I just want to be fair to them. You know?
We got 40 acre homeowners out.
There you go.
40 and 80, 80 in fact.
I just did a little Google and it says basically it looks like this is 2018 data, but it looks like 350 square feet will will power a house.
Yeah.
It's worth.
And I mean, yeah, but we don't know the guy that's on the three acres. I mean, is he doing it solely to power his usage or is he making money off it?
Right.
You know, as he's saying it back to the grid, I mean, there's no guarantee that the 1,500 he's got is just to power his house. I mean, my guess is he's making money. You know, I mean, that's probably in part why he did it.
Yeah. There's definitely, they're definitely making money, right? Because it's six kilowatts is 20 panels is 350 square feet. So if he's at 1,000, he's three, at least three times that, right? So.
I I think the good news is we're getting, we're in, we're getting into this game, the green game, and we need to be in the green game as a city for our residents. I think that's good news. I think Damian brought up a really good point, being from technology is is it's it's kind of, or at least when I took what you said, Damian, it's ever changing. One of the realities is is we don't know what the green energy is going to be. Solar looks like it could be, it could be wind. There are a million things that are that are not a million, but there are a lot of things out there right now. Solar could be something that we're going to be making changes over the next 10 years. So I think it's good to make a change now and or not a change, but come up with something now, knowing that it's probably going to change in the next couple of years.
Yeah, it's gonna change and and you just don't know until people want to come forward and start to put things in. That's the problem.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think the consensus is we don't want to end up with the situation we were in, you know, several months back where we have you know, someone, you know, that just wants to, you know, not live there. You know, put thousands of, you know, acres of of this and it's a nice, or, you know, we definitely all don't want that, sure.
Yes, and there's there's places for that, but that that particular spot, it's like, wow, that's that's really. I mean, I look even across the road from me, there's a few places you could put it and nobody'd even think about it, but along 92 like that, that just didn't work.
Yeah.
So I, you know, someday, you know, we may want to put in, but you know, there's not many places where you can get the power to XL Energy using their existing system, so. And those are the places we probably want them is not right on the main road to our city through our city. I just wanted to make sure that that we made sure that this 3,000 square feet, like Nick was pointing out, only one of those, not four different of those, because that's a way to get around that if it's not written correctly either. Did anybody else have anything?
There's Gary Vars. The next paragraph down on screening. I don't have any suggestions, but it says it must be screened from view to the extent possible. That's a that's a very, very wide open statement. I was wondering if there's any way we could clarify that a little bit. What view, where are you viewing this thing from? Like you mentioned the the one on 92, going north on 92, come over the hill. And there would be that whole field of of solar panels, which we didn't want to have. But how are we going to judge that?
Well, I I I think we kind of, I hear I hear what you're saying, Gary, but I think I believe we should leave that open a little bit because to the point where it says green from view without reducing its efficiency, you know? And and I think that just comes down to aesthetics, you know, we we don't want something sticking out there like a sore thumb. My opinion of that is yeah, you can get more specific, but I think Nicholas, I I'm I'm fine with what that states, my opinion of it, because it does leave it open for discussion.
Right. We usually discuss it in more detail with the C CUP, right, Nick?
I mean, that's what I was gonna say is, I mean, to me, that seems like a prime standard where you would utilize a condition to control it. I mean, I can see where Gary's coming from. And I mean, you know, adding some language, I mean, to either say, you know, from adjacent parcels or from adjacent roadways. You know, maybe would be beneficial, but at the same time, I think, you know, it's a standard in there saying you need to screen these things as much as you can without putting it in a building, you know, making it useless. But at the same time, it would give us the flexibility to say on this parcel, you need X, maybe on this parcel, you need Y. And it would give us the flexibility to say different materials, different vegetative buffers, whatever, makes sense in different circumstances. So I mean, to me, I mean, adding language to say from adjacent properties and roadways, if that's gets what Gary's after, kind of makes some sense. I mean, that you know, I think can almost be inferred based on the language, but I mean, maybe being a little more explicit in in that regard is maybe not a a bad thing, but I don't know.
I don't have an answer to the best thing. I just read that and thought, boy, that's a big setup for a lot of discussion.
And this is Joe's, yeah, the my understanding is that language was was generally kept the same in the revisions to to give some flexibility to ensure that, you know, property owners can still have this now much more limited. I mean, much more limited in the sense that you can't have a whole field that has to be accessory. You can still, you know, support having solar, even if, you know, there happens to be like a hill where, you know, you might see the solar system from an angle, you can, you know, it's a discussion that can be had with the city to make sure that it is to the, as it says, to the extent possible without reducing its efficiency, still be able to have those those systems installed on the property.
Okay, did anybody have anything else? Anything else? Mike, you've been quiet. You can chime in if you want. Mike Kirkwood?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have just been tracking. I have nothing to add that hasn't already been said. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for being there. Okay. I guess the only I would say that I'd go to 3,000. I guess I didn't say that as a, I don't know what everybody else thinks. We're not taking a vote. We're not writing a proposal, right? So.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, I mean, at some point, maybe we should just go through and summarize kind of what we discussed. I mean, it doesn't have to be captured in any formal manner, but I just, to make sure that us as staff, we have you know, the correct idea with the changes that, you know, we've discussed and kind of came to certain conclusions on. I think at some point that that would probably be beneficial for everyone just to make sure that, hey, this is what we've kind of said we, you know, would consider changing. You know, and that's just my thought is I think, you know, if everyone's kind of said their piece. I mean, I've I it seems like there's only a few relatively probably relatively minor changes that have been brought up unless I'm I'm missing something major.
Mostly details. So what what are you gonna read a list to us what you heard? Because I didn't write any of this down.
Like you said, I mean, I took some short notes because I mean, I agree. I mean, they seem to be more minor detail oriented rather than substant, you know, substantiating changes. I certainly am am willing to read what I what I wrote down and, you know, if we want, if we're at that point where I don't want to do anything major to add.
But I I think it'd be nice to make a decision on whether we're going to go to 3,000 or stay at 2,000 feet.
So should we ask that specifically of everyone and just see whatever where everybody's at?
I think that's fair.
That one. Okay. Well, I said I wanted 3,000. Peter?
The 3,000 sounds good to me.
Gary, Petus?
Yeah, I like I like 3,000.
Steve?
Works for me.
Justin?
3,000 is fine with me.
Damian?
3,000 is fine with me, too.
And then John?
My my only point, 3,000 is pretty big, especially if we're thinking of houses, residential specifically, not farms. But but I'm not going to keep us from not going with 3,000. I'd be fine with that. But it is a large space when you think about 3,000 square feet.
I don't think you'd get 3,000 on a residential lot, right?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, in most cases, you're probably not going to hit that, I would guess.
Driveway. All I said now.
Yeah, the hard cover, the driveways, the the property lot lines, you'd have to be 10 feet or 15 feet in edge.
Yeah.
And the hard cover is probably going to do the most, right?
In most cases, I would say yes. But I think, yeah, I mean, setbacks is another factor that you got to consider. You know?
We just don't want to upset a bunch of neighbors where somebody Clark Rizwald comes in and puts it in in all of his backyard and side yard.
Well, I I do also want to point out, and I don't know this is much of our concern, but I gotta think, I mean, at least in our larger neighborhoods with active homeowners associations. I'm guessing they've got something in their covenants, but maybe not. But at the end of the day, I mean, I think the other factors we have suggested setbacks, lot coverage are still going to limit these things. You know, fairly fairly well. But I just thought that's another layer that we can't count on it because as Steve kind of nodded, I mean, some of them might not speak to it at all, you know, because it isn't more of an emerging technology. Some of the older associations maybe weren't thinking that that was something that would happen. But that was just something, you know, I mean, it's just another layer in some circumstances that may prohibit someone in general from doing it. They might not be able to do any of it. But you know, 2,000, 3,000. I think both are reasonable numbers and and I think reasonably justified based on the existing systems and what, you know, we can possibly expect, you know, in the in the other areas of the city.
Okay, because most people in residential lots these days, isn't there a hard cover almost to the 35% already anyway?
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, I would say so. You know, and I think the the thing that I guess, you know, it it we don't have a long history of it, but I mean, we had the ordinance in place for five years. And the closest thing we had was a three acre lot proposing ground mounted solar. We do see far more roof mounted in in the residential areas. I think it it was discussed earlier is people that live on a smaller lot valuable value their yard space and they don't want it taken up by, you know, a a ground mounted solar when they could stick it on their roof. So you know, it it probably going to end up being a little bit of trial and error, but I think we've got enough of a basis to go forward with either number. And I mean, you know, I guess see how it works, you know?
Are you gonna read the list of things that we talked about that you have notes on and then we'll?
That was why I've got, I think, three points, and that was one of three of them was the size. The other one is kind of, I suppose, the other one is kind of two parts. It's that double frontage lot discussion we had with the idea of taking the must and turning it into a may, but then also adding some language that ties those two sentences together. You know, where it talks about the side and the rear yard, and then it goes on to talk about double frontage lot, kind of tie those two together. I mean, quite honestly, that's what I've got. I mean, that and the size. I mean, I don't know if I missed anything, but I mean, those were were the points that I took away.
Okay, so that was it?
I said, that's what I got. I mean, I don't know if anyone if I'm missing anyone, please, you know, speak up. But I think that that's pretty much what what I took away from it.
That's all I had.
Sounds right.
Okay, and I I have, I'm just, I'm gonna have to say this, the hard cover, since I'm kind of depending on that to to minimize on the residential one, when it says tilted up, what does tilted up mean? Now I'm getting picky, but.
Well, my understanding is the system's angle depending on the path of the sun. So it might lay more flat in certain circumstances in order to capture the most sun and it might tilt up vertically depending on the, you know, the the sun's elevation. It's the worst case scenario.
Is based on when it's flat, right? When it's when it's level with the ground. Okay, I just want to make.
Level or as close to level as they get. I think we even in the site plan application. Right.
I thought earlier, Nick, you talked about taking the the circle around the whole thing and making up the.
Right, no, that that is correct, Steve, but I I think, I mean, you you got with, they have to be laying a certain way and then you drop. they have to be laying a certain way, and then you draw the box, I guess, is maybe where we're going with it. You still take the box around it, but, you know, the, the two on, or the, the outside panels would change depending on their tilt, I would guess. So, you know, I think, I think when we looked at the one for site plan, I mean, even if, in that specific application, even if he was completely flat, the amount of the panels themselves was lower than the 25% allowed. But, you know, I mean, if, if the language, you know, should be changed just to say, rather than say minimum tilt, just say flap, I mean, nothing wrong with that.
I just wanna make sure that it's clear.
I, Nicholas, I don't know enough of the technology to where a tilt or flat makes that much more difference. That, that's where I, I don't feel comfortable making that call.
Yeah, that's the, it just relates to hardcover, how you're, you're making that determination.
Yes, I mean, I think you could argue that minimum tilt is flat. So, I mean, I think you could make the argument that, they may not sit at minimum tilt, but minimum tilt is flat, I mean. So whether or not it says flat or it says minimum tilt, if, I don't, I don't have a preference either way.
Okay. Okay. Everybody, any other comments before we move on?
Well, Nicholas, back to your question you, you stated on the double frontage lots, my suggestion with double frontage lots, instead of stating solar systems must be located in a larger of the two yards, maybe you just stayed in there that on double frontage lots, designs must be submitted for approval, or, or something of that nature.
Well, I mean, they would be through the conditional use permit process. I mean, they'd have to show us where they're gonna put them as part of the plan. So, I mean, that's where you'd have a little bit of discretion, you know, with regards to location and moving them around. But, I mean, as part of the, the conditional use permit application, I mean, we'd get a site plan, a survey or something, showing where they wanna put them, and, you know, we could make that, you know, a condition would be move it here, move it there. If you wanna put it here, you gotta do this, you know, maybe it involves more screening or, who knows?
Yeah, my, my only point is, do we want the rest of that language in that sentence or not? Must be.
Yeah, just tying the two sentences together, I think, really clarified.
Anyone have anything else to add, or?
Laura, if you're talking, you're on mute. Did we lose her?
No, I was just waiting for somebody to, okay, I think we're done, huh? Now we can go on, we're done, right? We can go on to our informational items. So, Nick, do you have staff reports for us?
Yeah, I'm trying to think of what we had for last month. The IUP was approved, the, the transfer for the orchard was approved. I'm trying to think of what else we, we discussed at our last meeting. The COF Plan Amendment was approved, so that will move forward. It's with the Met Council now for their consideration. And I think, was that the two, the two items that were on the agenda last month? The deadline for March is this Friday. As of now, I don't have anything in, but we do have a couple extra days here where it's possible we could get something for, for March. Obviously, we'll have to figure out next steps with this ordinance, taking the feedback we received tonight, and figuring out where it'll end up. But that's what I have for now.
Okay, so any, any developments coming our way that you've been working on, or?
It's just that one on, on Enchanted is really the only prospective one. I mean, Woodland Cove, you know, we may see some action there with some, a next phase or something like that, but that would go straight to the city council for approval if that does come through. But as far as development, I mean, been pretty quiet recently.
Okay, thank you. Ann, did you have anything from the council that, anything that's been going on?
Probably the biggest is, you know, the internet service, where we were trying to do parallel paths to get everybody to have one, some adequate usable standard of internet service, and, and possibly bring in new vendors to, to the, to the whole thing. And the other parallel path is to get reliable service. There's a lot of people who have it, it's, it cuts out every day. We reset our router probably, I don't know, three or four times a day. So.
Who's, who's your internet service?
MediaCom, and we're paying the, I think we're paying the 79.99 rate. And we have an issue that we're trying to figure out, because I'm up on the, the second floor, I have an office on the second floor, and my husband's in the basement. He's, he's getting, next, he's right next to the modem. So, he's getting something like a 400 download, and I'm only getting a 62 download. And so, that's, that's part of this whole reliable service and figuring out where is the city responsible? What is the city responsible for? And how much is, is the city responsible for? And right now, the city council is looking at the three or 400 people that still need to be built out to have some really usable service. And then, as I said, this other parallel path will be discussed at the next, the second council meeting each month is going to have a certain dedicated amount of time to internet service.
Okay, cause we're on FrontierNet, so we don't hardly have anything. I would take your service.
Have you done speedcheck.org? And, and do you know what your download and upload are?
It can be anywhere from three to six.
Ooh.
Yes. So, we're out in the country.
Yeah.
If we're lucky, we did 10.
Yeah, yeah. You're one of the people who needs to be built out, and that built out thing means having the cables actually run to you, the fiber optic cables, and so that's what we're looking.
They're going to Oxy Oak Circle, I heard, and Farm Hill Road, and there was another place on the south side of the city, but I'm on 92, so.
Well, hang in there, because even though, I mean, the grant only covered, I believe, 80, 80 to 100 people, we know that there are 300 to 400 people that can't wait five years for us to get more grants. So, we're, we're working on where can we get the resources to make this happen for all, for the 300 or 400 people that need to be built out.
Ann, I don't know who this, obviously, who the city, this is John, who the city has been talking to, but one of my hotels over by Ridgedale Mall, US Internet went, went into that area, and they're kind of jumping around to the different, different locations. They're not real prevalent in the Twin Cities yet, but they may be small enough, but good enough, because they're fiber optic. And that hotel I have there is 10 times as fast as anything else I have in the Twin Cities, so.
That would be great. Ally Pulpus is the, the go-to woman for the internet. She's the Director of Administration, and she would be the perfect person to talk to. And I don't recognize that name on our list of possible vendors, so that would be great to add that.
Yeah, it's US Internet. I, I honestly don't know the people. I just subscribe to that service, cause they put in the fiber over by Ridgedale Mall, and
Okay.
we have Comcast everywhere else, and it is 10 times faster than the fiber. So, all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else from the council?
Um, no, I mean, we're, we're certainly having large discussions about how to pave more roads and what we need to, to get to that, because as far as I know, the paving of the roads is, is, we need to find more resources to do more roads in faster amounts of time. So that's something else we're talking about, too.
Okay, good. Is that it then?
Yeah.
Okay, we're ready for adjournment. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Oh, Laura, I apologize. I know what's, we don't wanna, this is John.
That's okay.
This is, this is a newbie question. So, I apologize if it's, if it's not a great question, but two, two questions regarding alternates. How, how does that work? I, I'm not an alternate, but are alternates, how, how does the alternate system work? Do, do, do they come to the meeting just like we all do? Or is everybody voting? I, I don't know how that system works. Then I got one additional question.
Um, you wanna say it, Nick, or do you want me?
Um, I can certainly chime in. The, the alternates are basically replacements in the event of an absence. So should one of the seven members not be able to make the meeting, or be sick, or for whatever reason, you know, we have alternate one and alternate two, which is Gary Vars and Mike Kirkwood. And they would step in your guys' place and become a voting member in the event that someone of the seven is absent. Obviously, there was some discussion on how that works when an open seat on the planning commission becomes available. That's a decision that the council's gonna have to figure out. But that was my understanding of the ordinance when we installed it a few years back was to basically ensure that we would have, you know, seven people on the planning commission to the fullest extent we could.
And Nicholas, so your answer is exactly what I thought it was going to be. So, if one of us cannot make it, is it our responsibility to contact Gary or Mike and say, hey, we, for whatever reason, we cannot make it?
Just communicate to me, you know, and it's helpful in advance to know if someone's not gonna be here. You know, obviously, you know, Gary and Mike, you know, certainly in the event like tonight, don't necessarily have to be here, but it is welcome that they are here, still able to give the feedback and, and comment as necessary. But when it comes to motions, it would be limited to the, the seven members of the planning commission, unless there's an absence, then Gary and Mike step up accordingly.
My second, thank you, Nicholas.
Nick, can I?
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry, Nick, I, I just wanted to interject, and, and John, so you understand also, that it's not just if they're absent, well, yes, if they're absent, but also if a planning commissioner cannot fulfill his seat anymore, one of the alternates will fill in. Isn't that correct, Nick, until either one of the terms come up? Isn't that my understanding of it also?
Correct, yeah. I mean, if someone, one of the seven were to step down now, the alternate would be given, in that case, the first opportunity to, to take a spot. We obviously ran into the precarious situation of, you know, coming up for reappointments to the planning commission and having open seats, and, you know, it's a discussion, I think I said, better had with the, with the council on those specifics. But, yeah, the alternates, you know, the main purpose is for, in case of an absence, but also, I mean, if, if someone were to resign, or stepped out, or be out for an extended period of time.
So, so my second question, real quick, was, and, and maybe I need to talk to Laura off, or, or someone, you know, outside of this meeting. But the question is, so I've been on, you know, school boards and, and, and corporate boards and nonprofits, so this is the first time I've been on a government commission. And I know when we have speakers, that everyone has to give their home address. I'm assuming part of that is so we know that they live in Minutrista, I'm assuming. But from a safety perspective, cause at times with the planning commission, we're gonna have some debates, you know, we're gonna have people, just like a lot of the meetings, a resident doesn't want something to happen, someone else doesn't want something. Be frank with you, the reason I'm about to ask this question is I saw where a judge was, was shot and killed in Texas. Do we have safety concerns where, where, whenever we have someone speak, we're asking for their address, and anyone that is on this call, which is any citizen, gets that address? Are, are there concerns there that, that, that we should be asking for people's address that anyone on this call can hear?
That would, Chris, do you know the rules on that?
Well, it's a public meeting. So, if we would be meeting in public, John, if somebody wanted to address the council or the planning commission, they would still have to give their name and address. It, it wouldn't change if we were being, if we were meeting in person or if we're meeting virtually. Does that help at all? I mean.
I understand that. I'm not as concerned, Chris, about if we're meeting in the council chambers, or we're meeting virtually. I is, and, I, you know, I hate to say it, I, I want everyone to be safe, you know, obviously, but my concern is that in today's world, you know, people are publicly giving their addresses, home addresses to people. So, I don't know. I'm not trying to open up a can of worms, you guys, but it just, it, it was something that kind of hit me, was kind of unique, I thought, as.
Nick, or Chris, can you, can you correct me? But in the case where there's like an attorney or an engineer, they've given the, their firm's address before in the past, correct?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, so they're, they're. Their contractor, the surveyor, an attorney, an engineer, whatever. I mean, I would say, I mean, if they're, you know, working with a client, they're not giving their personal address, they're giving their place of business.
Office address.
Yeah, in most cases, like with an applicant, I mean, their address is there anyways. I mean, addresses aren't hard to obtain. I guess it's just knowing who the person is at that address, you know. So your name and your address is pretty public, I would say.
That's pretty, pretty public information. Three, and we don't have phone numbers for people. Usually, well, we, you know, we try to redact that off of anything that, comments or email addresses or things like that. That's why all commissioners are assigned their own city email address, so that if somebody does wanna contact you, that's why you have a city email address, so they don't get your personal email address. Sorry, my throat is a little squeaky tonight. And we don't get, like I said, we don't give out commissioners' phone numbers, and the, the council members have city cell phones, so that's technically public information, too.
Right, okay.
I know, you know, we, we all try to stay safe, as, as safe as we can, but also, you know, people need to, we don't want people from everywhere either coming and commenting on things. I don't know how to explain that, but I mean, we just.
Well, you would be surprised who comes from outside the city to make comments. It's, it's a surprising thing.
Sure.
So, it's nice to know whether they're residents or not.
Yeah, understood.
But I don't think we're unique in requiring a name and an address at a public meeting. I, I can't imagine where.
No, um, no, most government agencies or most cities do require that, and especially at a public hearing.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, cool. I'm glad you raised the issue, John. That's very important to keep tuned into, I think.
Yep. Okay, any other things that anybody wants to bring up? Okay, well then, let's do the adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? I'll make a motion. Laura, do I have a second?
Justin will second.
Thank you, Justin. Justin is seconding, okay. Laura says yes. Peter?
Hi.
Gary Pettis? Steve?
Hi.
Justin?
Hi.
Damien?
Hi.
And John?
Hi.
And we are adjourned, and thank you, everybody.